Here.
Here.
We'll go ahead and call the meeting in order at three fifty-eight. All right, first thing on the under old business is the lodging tax advisory committee. After last week, I don't know how you guys felt, but I think we just need to do away with that lodging tax advisory committee. I was, I was appalled, I was embarrassed. And after Roberta and I met with the chamber yesterday morning at seven AM, there was things there that was twisted around, that wasn't correct. Things that I didn't say that he said, things that he said Roberta said, what it said.
Things that he said and said. He spent an hour and a half on the phone with him trying to calm him down because he was ready to start working his head off. He was very upset.
Well, he was up here, I met him up here, and yeah, he was still. So, I, I would like just to not have that advisory committee, period. I think the council, all of us can handle this ourselves with the help from Roberta. Especially, and each one of us have the legal guide here, so.
It's in your mind.
All I need is a motion on that.
So, let me just get this straight before we hear anybody make some comments. So, we're, we're absolving the tax advisory committee, which never really existed in a functional manner. And so, we are just going to be asking people to submit their requests through Roberta to the town council.
Yep.
Exactly.
Yeah, because.
There's my motion.
There you go. There's the motion.
Second.
Okay, so Sandy.
In the paper and everything, and nobody has come forward, he is the only one that I know of that's on that committee.
And actually, surprise, it's not here.
Well, that's.
Ginger's on it.
Yeah, there's people on it.
There are people on it.
Yeah, I, I asked to be on it and was appointed. Appointed, I don't mean that in the other way than it was sort of that's that way it was. Tom Batty.
Jessica.
Dan Henderson.
Jessica, Dan Henderson and Jan.
Right, right.
Right, and, you know, we just met twice and it was not easy.
Twice in a year? Twice in, yeah.
Well.
Twice is.
We were, we, the supposed committee, as I recall, was not really formed. How long ago did we do the first meeting? Let's see, this is like, it was right or it was in January?
We only had two meetings. Um, I think it was January and then we met in February whenever.
Right, right, we met in January and in February. And Mike was kind of the chairperson. And there was discussion here about appointing him as chairperson.
He was appointed chair here at the weekend.
He was. So, it was, you know, if it was unofficial, it didn't appear to be unofficial to us that were involved in it. And the issues really were around developing process. And the only thing that I would say, I think that what you're doing is, is good. But the one thing that I would really ask is that there be some sort of process around the, around the committee so that it's clear to the community how to go about applying and what the criteria is. Really clear criteria, because we're all gonna get ourselves in trouble in some form if we don't know what the parameters are and if we don't have sideboards on it. So, that's, that's the one thing that I would say.
Okay.
Yeah, I think there should be an application process.
Right, and some criteria about.
Not only a.
Yeah, we should, and we should have had, if people, what's the. Just had it off the press.
Okay.
And I also have some other stuff that we can talk about.
Perfect. See, that's all I think.
People need to know what the criteria is to get the money and not just get an application for any old thing that they think they want.
Well, that's true, because you will get.
Yeah, we will.
You're gonna get all kinds of stuff and you're gonna have to make decisions. And you don't wanna make it contentious.
This is a drug. So, we can go ahead with making that. You made a motion.
I made a motion.
You seconded. Now, make me sure if I got it correct. So, I put Sandy made a motion to dissolve the lodging tax committee. And the applications should be submitted through the town manager, then to the town council. Is that it? I got you. All right. Okay, so it's a motion and a second.
Okay, vote in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Vote opposed? Okay.
I just drafted, and it's kind of from the county, but what we need to do, and I put up there to, to kind of go over some guidelines of what we want and whether we need another work session to do that, but to go through exactly what the council, we want some of that funding to go through, that seventy percent. And also the thirty percent that we have that's going into the general fund. So, the here's just drafted, like I said, it just came off the printer. And once the application processed, um, this one was from the Lakes, the Art Council, so it's for art, humanity, or whatever. Yeah.
Oh, you're talking about the application itself?
Yeah, but that's where I got, I mean, that's where it's from.
Fashion, yeah, I get it.
But we need to tweak it for Lakeview, but.
That's the application.
This is the process. You're welcome to input, because I.
Well, I think there's two pieces usually for these processes. And I think that that's what you're doing here, is you've got an application. Then there's another piece that goes along with it, that's the guidelines. It can be a half a page long or it can be twenty pages long.
And that's kind of what the process is.
Yeah, there you go.
Process, or then the application.
Right.
So, one of the things that I, in my research, that, you know, I mean, obviously, we still have a lot to discover, is I read through the ordinance in there, and it seemed pretty, pretty clear cut. The attorney general gave an opinion letter on the tourism dollars. And I'd like to share it with the council eventually, get you guys a copy. It's not something that we all read through here, because it's like fourteen pages long. But it talks a lot about the specifics of what they meant those funds to be used for. So, I know there was some discussion about infrastructure, um, there was discussion about, um, you know, the thirty percent, seventy percent. And, you know, something as simple as, and they talk about like the Holt Center in Eugene and some of those places that, while they are not tourism-only facilities, they obviously get a significant amount of tourism and that the, this money to be used in support. You know, we have the Chamber Building, it is not a, well, the Chamber Building is more of a tourism facility than the. But.
You could compare it with the Alger Theater.
Well, you know, that's what I was gonna bring up. So, the Alger Theater is something that I actually, um, that, there's some interesting language in here about, um, primary use versus substantial use. And I, that's why we'd like you guys to read through it, because the Alger Theater is one of those. The primary use of that is not necessarily tourism. However, having family members that came into town for your guys' concert, my mother-in-law, I don't, it was a, sorry, but a really old band, I have no idea who it was. Somebody. Yes, thank you. And it's by tourism, because they all came back for that and they all, you know, stayed locally and shopped locally and ate locally. So, that would actually classify reading this opinion letter from the attorney general as a building that could be used for tourism funds.
So, I've said substantial and what?
Uh, substantial and.
Primary.
Primary, yeah.
So, there's some really interesting language about the interpretation of those in infrastructure, because that was something that we, we all had some questions about. And so, that's something I think that is worthy of reading, and I'd like to, I'm sorry, I just got it in pre-credit right before I got here. And how we could use those funds, it talks about roads and things like that, you know, we kind of talked about sewer and it kind of goes over that. That if it's leading to a specific tourism site, yes, it would be used for the roads. Not necessarily the wear and tear of the roads on the highway, because traffic comes through there that's tourism-related. So, um, but it's, it's a really good, you know, informational piece that I think would be worth looking at when we start talking about things and thinking outside the box, Alger Theater. You know, the Fairgrounds is another facility that would qualify under that purview, because they can bring in a lot of tourism. So, there's, there's a lot of opportunities out there. Obviously, our trail system, even the museum, the MC wagon museums considered, you know, stuff like that. But just kind of thinking outside of the box a little bit. So, I'll get that copy for you guys.
So, what was the date on the letter, just out of curiosity?
Two thousand eighteen, or eight. And this was right after.
It was right after it was established.
Mm-hmm. And then it discusses, um, there was an amendment or the other bill that came through about the seventy thirty. So, it has the seventy thirty in here in the specifics, and that has been.
And I think there might be another something like that. And the, and the League of Oregon Cities, I'm sorry, I didn't bring my folder, I've been in my office. But, um, there's a woman at the League of Oregon Cities, maybe some of you have already talked with her, but she is like the guru of this. And she puts out every other year, on a legislative year, she puts out a report. And we had the one from eighteen, I believe, yeah, it was two thousand eighteen, I've got that report, I don't know if any of you.
I've read that.
Yeah.
About how much tourism is brought in and the effect on jobs and all that.
No, not so much, it's more of an interpretive thing like the attorney general, but it's written from, uh, the League of Oregon Cities kind of place. And this person who has worked with the legislator, legislature, I think her name's Michelle, but I'm blanking on her last name and bad about that. But, um, it's worth reading, it's very worth reading, and she's in the process of, um, developing a new one. And there are gonna be some changes this year in the legislative session. I don't know that they have happened yet, but there were a couple of bills that we're gonna strengthen and simplify the language and get more, um, get more clarification. Because part, what, what we're experiencing here in interpretation has been tenfold in other areas, and it's really caused some problems. So, there'll be more.
There's a lot of.
There're more about it.
Ambiguous wording in there.
Yes.
Legislation wasn't clearly written?
It's really fun.
She's good at discussing the gray areas of it.
Well, she is.
Yeah.
The seventy cent, seventy percent, I think, not seventy cents, seventy percent that goes in towards tourism, that's exactly what they're promoting. And that's, that, you know, there is actually on city property.
So, it falls under it and, and the signage, all of that stuff, you know, even if we wanted to put signage out on the highways, besides ODOT. But, you know, pointing these out would qualify under that as well, you know, something bigger. I know that they talked about.
They already have an ODOT sign going up that's made for by Travis and Morgan.
Yeah. So, I mean, that stuff that can be funded with that.
Okay. Move on down to B, Lake County Chamber Outback Trails Committee, funds for the brochure, design and printing.
How many, how many total signs are you putting up, I do you know?
Signs?
Signs are they put, how, how many signs are they putting up? There's three pictures here, but.
Yeah, I think there's the, the three, the ODOT sign and.
Okay, oh, six, never mind, I'll be answering.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Six.
Six.
Okay.
There would be six.
Well, there are fifteen hundred dollars for this, and it was really bad when you had somebody in the audience offer to give them fifteen hundred dollars a week. We didn't, I felt really bad. I mean, like I said, I was holding.
Can you extend our apologies? I felt really bad for Melissa and Jamie to kind of get caught up in.
Yes.
I mean, I don't want people to come to the meetings and not feel like they can't ask for stuff, I guess. And may, you know, be a no, or maybe give us a, you know, a week to look over things. I want them to know that, we want them to keep coming and asking. I really felt bad for them, because I think they were kind of caught in the.
Well.
They were caught.
They were basically being called liars, is what, I mean, he was saying that that wasn't.
Well, my interpretation was, he was calling them shills for the Chamber of Commerce, because fifteen hundred dollars is gonna get us over whatever budget was we seemed to have.
So, do you want to motion?
Yes.
I have. I'd like to make a motion. A motion about this. To approve the request from Lake County Chamber Outback Trails Committee for the funds for brochure, design and printing, to the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. I'll second it.
Motion, Ben, second. Paper?
Aye.
Vote opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any more to that? Next is liaison appointments. Instead of doing that, you know, can we, can we move that down? Cause.
Thanks, Mom.
Well, go to other. If I have any comments for them?
I plan on making my presentations at the regular board meeting on April twenty-third.
Okay, on the agenda, all of it. I saw I.
Three hours.
Jessica.
Free some Red Bull, we're all dying up here, we're tired. I didn't know if we wanted to talk about.
Do we?
Can we talk about the sheriff, where we're at with the sheriff's department?
There's others, you can talk whatever you want to.
I don't know if anybody knows, but we have hired three officers.
Wow, that's three great officers.
Three great officers. We had, we had eight that we interviewed, and if we had six spots, we would have hired six.
Oh, man, that's great. That's great.
Really, really good. Really good turnout. Mike Patterson will be coming back to sheriff's department. They hired.
He's still serving five months.
Yes, yeah, he'll actually.
Be right, ready to go.
He'll be ready to go probably about the middle of May, all the battle.
Well, that's good, that's a deal.
Great.
Will they have to go to the academy first, or are they already ready to go? Two of them will, one of them won't, Mike Patterson won't. Of course, he's already been through that dance. Yeah. Then we hired, um, Thomas Robinson from Redmond. He, uh, fresh out of military, uh, just graduated college with a criminal science degree. He was on the presidential security team. So, he's a little training.
Wow.
Presidential as in secret service? Mm-hmm. Nice. Through the court.
He wants to come to Lakeview.
He said it's not a money thing for him, he's tired of living in the city. He wants a quiet little place to go. Amen, brother. He's a fairly young guy, he's not very old. I'll tell you, he interviewed very, very well. Interviewed very well.
Number three?
Uh, Dustin Stoppes.
He is a dispatcher firefighter in current.
His wife, Cherry.
Yeah.
They'll all be coming on right around May sixth.
Yeah.
And then they'll be waiting for their spot at the academy, so they'll be training with other officers through the county until they get their spot at the academy.
That's great.
That's good news. So, mid-fall, or late fall? It's like when we get in the academy too.
It depends on the academy, but they can start doing some of their pre-stuff, you know, they're, they're doing their psych evals and stuff now. And I think, in fact, Thomas is gonna ask today.
They can ride with another officer for a certain period of time and then.
So, they can be.
But the academy is four months.
Possibly.
Pardon me?
Yeah, they can utilize time with, with another officer at this point. And then, and it depends, like Roberta said, there's not always spots open if you like. They may have to wait two or three rollovers before all three of, or two of them get in. So, it'll depend on how busy they are and how many spots there are, but at least we're moving forward.
And that's great.
Very. Okay, the nice weather has brought out all the crazy drivers they know.
Did we, uh, I didn't need, but somehow I didn't. I had in my mind we're gonna talk about the golf cart on the streets.
I don't know.
But anyway, so, we haven't gotten anywhere with that yet, okay.
Okay, did you wanna talk about the?
Golf cart?
No.
No!
The what?
Marking?
No.
Oh, okay.
I thought Ginger was going to give us some.
We gotta wait, do some other research.
She's gonna check on stuff first. I've already, we've already got her going.
Yeah, I will, I should be able to get an answer, you know, some more information here fairly quickly. And then the next, you tell me when you want me to come and talk about.
I don't know how much we have on the agenda for next Tuesday.
Not too much yet, it just depends on when you can.
I might be able to have it by then, you want, I can let you know by Monday. I can email him tomorrow and, or even tonight, and get him going on it.
Okay.
See what that might look like.
These guys are all sitting there, what about?
Actually, Ray, I was kind of spacing off, so, sorry, you caught me there.
So, looking at this grant application process, it definitely needs some revisions. Besides the.
That's just a wrap, I was just.
Let's see what we can, yeah, see what we can come up with. I mean, obviously, a lot of words need to change out to tourism type stuff, but.
Now, I have the discribals.
Okay. Now, let's just move back up on the liaison positions. So. As it is, right now, Scott, Scott Fire, Sheriff, Sandy's on the prison advisory. The one open, nine-one-one, intergovernment council, EMS, dispatch area, uh, Commission of Transportation, Lake County Economic Development Advisory Committee, Senior Citizens Board, Public Works, school ed, enterprise zone, and Regional Solutions. So, there's really not that much left.
So, is there one that, besides all my.
Divided by five.
But see, what they've done, what they've come up with is, there's A, B, C, D.
We divided it by four.
These four, they take all the liaisons. But Roberta and I are on all of them, so.
We can use Ken's hat and put the names in and you can.
Is there like a majority of one person in one group to have finished assigning that group to that person?
Scott and Sandy have got quite a few, Darwin's got four.
Darwin's got one.
Five, six, I have one, two, three, four, five, seven things right now.
Scott's got one, two.
So, Scott, what do you have?
Four.
Hmm?
What do you have?
His majority of his. Oh, and air quality, I forgot air quality.
Oh. Who's on that before?
You have.
Who was on it before?
I think Darwin was on.
I'm on it because of the county, you know.
Yeah. Are you gonna be on again?
Jamie's on air quality.
Yeah, I can be on.
No, I'm not.
I got you down there.
I'm still gonna be going. I know, it's Jamie, we're gonna have to. We don't get to have two of them.
Yeah, it'd be a better use of time card, just like.
Can I make a suggestion?
I'm sorry. Okay.
Yes, go for it.
Go for it.
So, I think I heard Lake County Economic Development, that group has kind of like not been happening.
That's why we haven't sent anybody.
Don't be an easy one to watch.
I was gonna say, nobody's jumped on that yet.
I know, I know. But is there, um, is there anybody that, and I might have not heard it, um, on LCP, is there at least?
I am meeting with Ann tomorrow.
Oh, perfect, okay.
Yeah. All right, come on, guys. What's, I'm a visual person. Eight?
Yeah, what's, who's got the lease and let them go next?
Who want, I'll just start, start with eight, right here, public work, who wants public work?
Scott does.
All right. Just go ahead.
I don't mind doing that one. Pardon, anybody else wants that one? I don't mind doing that one. Want it? Sure, done.
Should I not?
No, it's all yours, dude.
So, you're gonna be in my office at nine in the morning tomorrow?
Enterprise zone.
I won't be there.
How many do I have?
Two. Three. You have the police.
You have three, you're so far.
I have police, fire, telephones.
How it works.
Four, five.
Just keep nodding.
You got five. One, I can't.
You have a fire?
Do you think? I'm just going down through the list, all right. Next on there is the Regional Solutions Team.
What is that? That usually causes problems, not solutions. They often meet with, with the school ed and stuff like that.
I had a meeting today.
So, yeah, Regional Solutions Team is actually the governor's eyes and ears and help facilitate, um, projects and especially economic development projects in the different regions. They have the, the states split up into different regions. So, the region that we're in encompasses Klamas, Lake, Deschutes. Is that it?
I think it goes on up to Columbia.
Does it go all the way up there?
But it's broken into subregions there.
Yeah. So, anyway, there's a woman by the name of Annette Levy, who is the coordinator for that. And they have been really, that group has been very instrumental in helping kind of grease the skids for Red Rock on the state level and on the local level to get through all the myriad of permitting and required things like that. So, that's one role that they can have. Another role is they can bring people together for issues, um, were they primary in the, in the one-stop meeting that was here about the water issue? No, they weren't? Okay, but anyway, they've done things like that in the past. Uh, they usually, they, not usually, but they do have members that pretty much represent just about every state department that, um, we have. That anybody who works in the region for, um, DEQ or.
Wetlands, so.
Yeah, wetlands, ODOT, blah, blah, blah. They all, there's a member at, at each Regional Solutions Team, uh, group. So, they have been really helpful in, um, providing information and resources about different issues that a region might have. They're really, were fundamentally, uh, helpful in getting the planning grant for the Fairgrounds that just recently happened to develop what they're, you know, a master plan, only they're not calling it a master plan, I forget what they call it. But that's pretty much it. Facilities plan, thank you very much. So, that's kind of what they do. Um, there's, the people that sit on that have some significant, uh, connection to a department or a, a action team that can help with whatever might need to happen. They were, they've been helpful with broadband. We haven't always been successful in getting funding, but they've been able to help kind of push some issues, even at the legislative ish, at the legislative, uh, level. So, that's kind of what it's about.
Basically, uh.
Yeah, he knows more.
If a project or something requires several different state departments, they pull the person that cuts, that facilitates, informs and the biggest thing is that greases and facilitate the red tape.
Be careful with things that make you travel, if you don't want to be traveling to those meetings.
Well, we, it's just been, it's just been like you, like you had Klamas, it's gotten easier.
So, that's not so bad.
Yeah, it's gotten easier.
Yeah, it switches every couple of months.
Yeah.
It was here, I had the phone call today, conference call, so, you know, we do a lot of conference calls. It's two-hour meeting.
You want that?
Yeah, I don't mind that.
You drive three hours for a two-hour meeting?
I just don't do that usually.
I've driven six hours for.
AMB is full. Go to C. Nine-one-one, intergovernment council.
It's like quiet as this room's been.
Well, we got EMS.
I don't mind taking that. Those kind of, well, EMS and, what'd you say, was it nine-one-one?
EMS, we don't have any buddy emergency services.
I don't know, it's on here. All right, well, dispatch area.
I've never had any.
Area Commission on Transportation.
Scratch that one, EMS. We've never had a liaison. Unless we want to get one.
All right, you got area, dispatch area of transportation, that's the one you were on, wasn't it, Roberta?
I'm on all of them.
Well, you were, I stand, were, were.
Squack often beats with.
Yeah, I'm on the executive committee for Squack.
Yeah, that's. That's the other one, so I'm such a worried Squack.
She's already on it, we really need to. Yeah, she's already on, it would really be the liaison, she goes to all the meetings. Yeah, so we don't really need to throw liaison on that.
I think the fundamental ones really are important in our life, the fire, dispatch, police. You know, those, I think those are very cool. Yeah, the ones that you're here, that you can connect with the people here are pretty important.
And all, all down, Lake County Economic Development.
That's no longer here.
That's no longer.
No longer, okay.
Not right now.
Advisory Committee.
That's very vague.
Yeah, why do we advise? I advise you to move on.
Senior Citizens Board.
Senior Citizens Board is a.
Yeah, but.
First of all, they never let me know when they're meeting. They do show up, they act like you're included, and.
So it's not on the list?
It was not, yeah, it was, it was, it was a good idea, but I couldn't make it work. And maybe that's because I'm just lazy, I don't.
You're too young.
Scratch that.
Oh, bless your hearts, boy.
Okay, that puts you back up. Back up to the nine-one-one, intergovernment council, and the dispatch area commission on transportation.
I'll take the nine-one-one. I'll take the nine-one-one.
Okay.
And then what is the other one you said?
Take the person who has the least amount, even though.
Yeah, that's what I was.
It's not, which one would Sandy have?
Probably not.
Well, I, I have eight, because I just thought also that I didn't have on my list on Lake County Public Safety Committee.
I'll just make, I'll.
That'd be a good idea, it's all people.
Yeah. Okay.
So do they contact us for these meetings, or how does this all work, given due to this game?
Yeah, most times, sometimes.
Well, I think, I think one, I wonder, we sent out letters to these, some of these organizations.
Oh, did you?
Yeah. Your dawn, I think, did. I don't, seems like we did, didn't we, Sharon?
What?
Sent letters out to some of these organizations telling them that, who their liaison person from dawn was.
With, that wouldn't be a bad idea, I'm not sure we did it or not, but that would be a good idea. Plus, when you send that letter, make sure you put contact information on there, because sometimes they, you know, don't know your phone number, don't know your.
Well, yeah.
Almost everything comes to you.
It should be on some letterhead, it should be sent to them.
But that, that liaison needs to have contact information.
You know?
Anybody have anything else?
It's a little loud, I can hear it at my house here.
That's it? That's it? Anybody have anything else they wanna bring up? None? All right, we're turning the meeting at four-thirty-one.